One minute.
I'll go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Regular Assembly Meeting of Thursday, October 17, 2024, at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. We'll have the first thing is the invocation by Cadet Joe Durn of the Salvation Army, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Heavenly Father, I just give thanks for this beautiful, beautiful day here in Kodiak, Alaska. Lord, I just ask that you be with teaching everyone of us in this room. Just be the light in this room. Just be with us in our discussions and everything that we talk about and all the matters at hand, and we just thank you, Lord. And I just ask that you keep us in good spirits and in good health. In your Son's name, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiaka Luteq people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Luteq region. We recognize the Luteq culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames. Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Ladoo. Mr. Sharrett.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Turner. Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arndt.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Scott.
Move to excuse Assembly Member Ames, who was absent due to personal leave, and Assembly Member Ladoo is absent due to medical leave.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
No.
Mr. Sharrett.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion failed, two yes, two no's.
Okay. Next item we have is approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Scott?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the Consent Agenda has approval of the minutes for a special meeting of September 26, 24, and the regular meeting minutes of October 3, 2024. Next item is Citizens' Comments. This is Agenda Items Not Scheduled for Public Hearing and General Comments. The local phone number is (907) 486-3231. The toll-free number, (855) 492-9202. Ask you to sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the microphone before speaking. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If calling in, please turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Please come forward to the podium if you'd like to speak under Citizens' Comments.
It is now. My name is Brenda Finley. Thank you. I am coming before my Assembly Members this evening with the concern that I have no idea how to get addressed. I have a handout detailing all of the communication that I have had with my Service Area One Board Chair, and I haven't received any help. It's been almost seven months. I have some lack of maintenance that's affecting my property, very serious risks involved with standing water, with ditch drainage. I have a complete obstruction from the east with a full-sized tree, so leaving my driveway puts my family and I in danger every time, and I have been working well before summer started so I could get all of this addressed and taken care of, and here I still stand. I don't know who to contact if I can't get a response from my Service Area Board. I've emailed them, and I didn't get a response. I've reached out, seventeen calls throughout the summer with voicemails that were unanswered, and I don't know how else to proceed. So I'm coming before you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've documented everything. I think I've laid the case out pretty well, if you look through the paperwork that I've given you, and if anybody wants to point me in the right direction of who I need to contact and how I can get this completed to get some assistance of any kind, I would be happy to listen. I'd be happy to talk through it. I welcome you to come peruse my property, drive in my driveway, whatever you need to do, so you know that I'm not just dramatic and that I have legitimate concerns that have repeatedly fallen on deaf ears. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak under Citizens' Comments or call in, please do so at this time.
Good evening, Assembly. Coral Chernoff. I wanted to speak on the Amendment Two that is on the agenda tonight. At the last meeting, it sounded like there were some pretty big questions concerning that, and I don't know what's going to happen tonight, but what I hope happens is that the Assembly gives very clear direction if some parts of this amendment are going to continue forward and get worked on. I hope that you can give very clear direction on what that work is. The work so far has included grammar, crossing out parts of the contract from staff, changing some meanings and definitions, and then amendments from Alaska Waste that the staff has spent a lot of time working on. So, again, I just hope that Assembly can give some really clear direction if any of that's going to be worked on moving forward, and I guess most especially if staff is going to be doing any more work for Alaska Waste in their desire to have amendments. I also want to say, last time, well, at a meeting and at the last meeting I attended, there was a lot of talk about having to address this customer count, and that seemed to be a big part of the changes to the amendment. In one of the meetings, our manager said she did not like the way that, the new way that the customer count was being counted, and then that essentially was repeated at the last meeting. And I would just like the Assembly to reflect on why is there a new way of counting customer count? Where does that come from? What led them in the previous years, the way they customer counted? And perhaps that question could be answered by Alaska Waste at some time, why they seemingly have decided to change the way they do customer count. Seems like they did customer count in a particular way for four years, and then this year have decided to change that, and that has brought up issues. So I hope you reflect on that, and I thank you very much for all the work you do, the time you put in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coral. Anyone else, or is there any calls? No calls. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Good evening, Kodiak Island Borough Assembly. My name is Sean Docterman. I'm on here, I'm here on behalf of myself as well as my family. We've lived in the Kodiak Island Borough for forty-five years. All those years, I've been a fisherman from here to the other Aleutians, to St. Matthews, all the Bering Sea and the whole Gulf of Alaska. Spent my whole life here, working. And so, I'm here tonight to broadcast to the residents of the Kodiak Island that we have a huge problem with contractors that are leaving or have left heavy equipment on people's personal property or on the Kodiak Island Borough land. As my brother and I were here at the last meeting, we spoke to the fact that someone, a contractor in Kodiak, has left a Komatsu D-155A bulldozer on our family's property at 1754 Three Sisters Way after doing work on there and being paid for it. And it wasn't, it wasn't last week, sixteen years. So, anyway, the owner of the bulldozer is here in the building. He needs to remove his property. Otherwise, it will cost us approximately $40,000 to be removed, which will come out of the cost of my brothers and sister, as my stepmother has passed in her estate. But, there is a Borough Code about junk and about left vehicles. That's 10 dot 10 dot 010. Problem is, there's nothing behind it to push the Borough to move forward. So, it sounds like that we need to find some more law or code to push this forward. The state code covers vehicles but doesn't cover junk, and it's a little bit more thorough. So, anyway, I would like to tell you that my father, for twelve years politely asked that person to remove said object from our property, and that person actually got it started and then never moved it. And so, for another five years, my stepmother was alive, my brother was here in proxy to ask you to remove, or that person to remove that property. And there was no special deal with my dad. My dad had been, let me use the word, very profane about wanting it moved. And so, we're asking the Kodiak Island Borough to do something about this, because this is not the other one. There's another one out at the landfill, just like it, and it's got somebody's name attached to it. And then there's another piece up on High Street that's up in the Kodiak Island Borough that's heavy equipment, but it's got somebody else's name on it. And there's one other piece down here, at Lily Lake. And so, we will be addressing all of those pieces that are found on Borough land and asking them to be removed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Docterman. Anyone else wishing to come forward, speak under Citizens' Comments, please do so at this time? Any calls? No calls? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is Committee Reports. Are there any Committee Reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to Borough Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Assembly Members. This week, I was able to attend a meeting with River Focus. River Focus is the contractor that's going to be working on our hydrology and hydraulic study that's going to be out in Bell's Flats. They're actually going to be here on island with three staff members from November 4 through 8, and we're working with them to set up a time. We're thinking it's going to be over lunch on November 6, that they can meet with residents that live out in Bell's Flats, who have been affected either by the river changing course or by flooding on the Sergeant Creek side. I also had the opportunity to meet with Carl Hertz this week, who's the Administrator of Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center, to go over updates to our HVAC drawings, regulatory issues, and some more information about our hospital's base study analysis. We were sent a copy of the 65% drawings, and our project manager noticed that the engineering firms changed from the 35% to the 65%, so we're trying to figure out why that happened and what those changes mean. For our solid waste contract, I met with the Borough Attorney and Engineering Facility Staff this morning to go over the updated direction for Amendment Number Two, and I'll tell you more about that when we get to that in those Agenda Items. I was able to go to Chinniac on Tuesday with Assessing to experience a little bit of what they do when they measure properties, so that was eye-opening on all the measurements that they have to take. I still have listed in the report the AML Annual Conference for the 11th through 13th of December, and we are currently recruiting an Associate Planner and a Fiscal Technician here at the Borough. In Community Development, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a regular meeting last night on October 16. A public hearing was held on the rewrite of Chapter 17.205, which regards rezonings and code amendments. The Commission continued review to the next regular meeting on November 20, 2024. In Assessing, fieldwork is about 85% done. You'll still see them in Minoshka, Bell's Flats, Chinniac, and Besagshak. The assessor will be traveling out to our villages, and her travel schedule is there throughout the month of November. If you're interested in trying to hop on one of those flights with the assessor, and we're teaming up with Kana to go out to the villages, please let Seema know, and she'll get you on those flights as best as they can. For exemptions, we have one new exemption application that was processed and sent out on October 10. They have thirty days to ask for a reconsideration. One applicant participated in a reconsideration that took place on September 24. We responded on October 11, and they have thirty days to appeal. And then one applicant appealed their reconsideration to the Superior Court on this past Friday, October 11, 2024. All of the departments that are involved with the Tyler conversion are busy at work with that. You'll see updates in that in both Assessing and Finance. In Engineering Facilities, the staff has advertised for an Architectural and Engineering Services RFP. The proposal packages are due October 24. The process for choosing the winning proposals is listed out there in the report. As I informed you a couple of weeks ago, the Borough Office Buildings here are still having lift station issues. We have order replacement pumps and controllers. They're supposed to arrive early next week, and then we've worked with our contractors. They are on standby to get those pumps installed as soon as possible once they arrive. I think everyone in the building will be very happy when that happens. At KFRC, we had a contract awarded through fiscal year 2024-38 with Otis Elevator. When we sent the contract to be signed, Otis responded with some requests for changes. There were some contract language negotiations over the past few months, and we failed to be able to come to an agreement that both parties were content with. So KAB and Otis can't come together, and so the Borough Attorney looked over the case and decided that we should cancel the bid in its entirety. This means the award that was authorized in June of 2024 will have to be rescinded, and we'll be requesting that as an Agenda Item in the upcoming weeks to move forward on that. And that was just for KFRC. Out at the landfill, we got our inspection score. We got a 95.7, so that's very good. We did have points deducted for wind-blown trash vector control, which is our bear issues. We have several bears that have made it into the landfill, and the alternate cover that they chose was not approved, so we're working on bringing those up to speed. And we're writing a well installation request for proposals so we can continue to investigate our stormwater violations. The Baylor-Billing concrete floor contracts and schedules are set. I think that's the same information that was in there last week. Staff is working with the Denali Commission on our solid waste management grant. The Assembly will see a resolution in November so we can accept those funds. There has been an increase in bear activity at roll-off container locations. We had two fourplexes this afternoon, or this morning, near Perez Way have a bear break in and spread the trash all over that area. So a reminder to residents to close the doors when you're done disposing of your trash as best as you can, so we can keep the bears out. At the leachate treatment plant, the contractor is scheduled to be here at the beginning of November. That's that pump switch out that we asked for when we didn't meet the 200 gallons per minute on our spec for when we made the pretreatment plant. Those new pumps will be switched out, so it's been a long time, so we're excited to see them get here. Also, staff has observed a change in the chemical makeup of the leachate entering the plant. The change is believed to have been caused by moving landfill operations down to Cell One, where leachate is entering the system more directly instead of filtering through the municipal solid waste. We're seeing higher concentrations of biochemical oxygen demand, chemical oxygen demand, and total suspended solids and additional metals are being observed in the leachate that's coming through now. So leachate is an ever-changing thing, but we saw some really massive changes when we moved down to Cell One. For the Peterson School Roof, the remaining flashing and parapet coverings arrived on the 16th, and the contractor installed them that same day. We're scheduled for the final roof inspection on October 25. In Finance, we made it through October 15 for all those one-time full payments. If you made a timely first-half payment, the remaining second-half payment is due on or before November 15 to avoid additional penalties and interest. In Information Technology, we're moving through the security audit process. The IT staff are currently having meetings with their auditors after they've scanned our networks and systems, and we have been awarded two cybersecurity grants for $227,997 for upgrading firewalls, networking, and backup infrastructure. Again, the Assembly is going to be asked to accept the funds via resolution in November. For hardware, it says three, but I know it's only two, because Assembly Member Griffin got his laptop, there's two laptops, one for Assembly Member Ladoo and Johnson, remaining to get passed out, and the LTP upgrade to their software was completed this week. Laserfish software upgrade was also completed, and the testing is completed, and our GIS analyst is finishing up the Carluck property IDs for upcoming work out in Carluck, and then they have about 180 of 7,800 property ID reviews that they have done since they were asked. Bayside has some exciting stuff going on, along with the Coast Guard Fire Department. There is an open house this Saturday, October 19, from 10 to 2. Bayside will have members at that event, and then the next weekend, on October 26, there'll be an open house event at Bayside Fire Department from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m., with, they'll have firefighters from Bayside, the U.S. Coast Guard, and the Kodiak Fire Department. And the cool thing about that is that where the firefighters are, the fire trucks are. So if you want to see all the fire trucks together, Bayside on the 26th is the place to be. There'll be a bounce house, Sparky the Fire Dog, and refreshments, including popcorn, hot dogs, and chili. So we're excited to see that happen. Bayside Fire Department is working on a formal rollout of their cadet program, which offers high-school-age students the opportunity to learn about emergency services as volunteer cadets at the fire department. Also, for Halloween, the fire department will have Be Present at Trunk or Treat events, including our Pink Fire Truck, or if you know her name, her name is Ms. Linda. She's going to be at the Kodiak High Noon Time Trunk or Treat on Halloween, and the Downtown Trunk or Treat that evening. So that'll be out and about. And then I just have listed our reminders for budget discussions, and that is all I have tonight. I'm happy to answer questions that you might have.
Thank you, Amy. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for you. As we were perusing through the engineering facilities, I took notice of the Architect and Engineer Services RFP, and there's a section here I'm not entirely sure, I'm hoping you can elaborate on. It says the Chair of the Kodiak Island Borough Architecture and Engineering Board and the Kodiak Island Borough employees will be the ones doing the review and evaluation.
So I think it's a staff member from F and E, the Chair of the ARB, and a representative from the Assembly, and a representative from the Kodiak Islands Borough School District does the initial review, and they score, and then that committee recommends something their top firm to the ARB, and then the ARB reviews the process and provides a recommendation to the Assembly.
Can I continue? Okay. Go ahead, and then I've got a comment, too.
So, I was appointed as an ex officio on the ARB, and that's not necessarily my understanding of how the architect and engineer firm is selected. Can we review or conduct a code review of the ARB to ensure that the ARB is involved in all of the architectural and engineering firms, and that that ARB as a body gets to weigh in on that? Because that's the way I read the code. That's the way that, as I was appointed into that position, that's the way I understood it, and I believe the ARB understands it that way as well.
Sure.
And then I do have some follow-on questions.
Okay. I'd like to address that particular one, Ryan, first. Yeah, it's my understanding, also, having been on the ARB, the last time we went out for proposals, staff did this, it came to the Assembly, the Architecture Review Board objected, and the Assembly referred it back to the Architecture Review Board to make a selection on there. And as I remember what it says in the code, is the Architecture Review Board reviews all proposals for architectural services. So I think that needs to be changed. So, Ryan, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I don't like agreeing with you, I will on that one. The next question. When we start talking about the elevator maintenance service contract, if I recall in our conversations, this was a combined elevator solicitation for not just the KFRC, but wasn't this inclusive of the schools as well, or did that get separated out?
This did get separated out. This is, this particular one is just for the KFRC.
Okay. So we still have elevator maintenance on tap for the schools and the ongoing problems there?
Yes.
Okay. Last question, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Continue.
So we heard public testimony tonight on junk and abandoned property, and it got me thinking about our assessing department. And when, at least in my own experience, because I have heavy equipment in my yard, I had to answer questions about heavy equipment and Connex boxes and things of that nature. So it got me thinking that if we've got heavy equipment that is not the property owner's, is that considered or factored in during an assessment? And is there a, I guess, financial increase of value or worth to property if there's this equipment parked on there?
So if there is equipment parked on there, it would be assigned to business personal property tax, not your personal property tax. So they would have to have a business personal property tax account for them to assign it to, unless you were using Connexes for storage, for your personal storage. So what happens is they find property, and they don't know what it belongs to, they'll ask. So the property that we were out this week, they had two Connexes and a bunch of equipment, so they divided them. One was permanent storage for the house, the other one moved around with the business. So the one that stays with the house got assessed to personal property, the one that moved around got assessed to business personal property. So they'll ask questions and figure out what's going on. So the assessor is in the audience, but I'm assuming that there's no increase for a bulldozer in someone's yard?
She is correct. We would not tax or assess the bulldozer in somebody's yard, but typically, we would ask them who it belonged to and make sure that it was on whoever's business personal property it did belong to.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
If they're there. So if they're not there, sometimes we'll leave notes, and we just don't know.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, move on to messages from the Borough Mayor. The only thing I would ask is that everybody either get out for the early voting or get out for the general election here, first Tuesday in November. Next item is unfinished business. We have contract number FY 2019-25B, Amendment Number Two, with Waste Connections of Alaska Doing Business as Alaska Waste for Residential and Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services. The motion is already on the floor. Well, the motion is already on the floor, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and ask our manager for a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kodiak Island Borough Assembly established a solid waste contract committee with Resolution Fiscal Year 2024-12 to evaluate, develop, and clarify inconsistencies with the current solid waste contract. After nine meetings, the committee recommended changes to general formatting, definition, fees, and reporting periods. The summary of the changes were sent to the Borough Attorney, and the final product was then sent to the Assembly on August 30th to prep for discussion at the September 12th work session. The Assembly asked for more time to review proposed changes, and a public hearing was added to the October 3rd regular meeting. At the October 10th work session, staff was instructed to minimize changes and focus on ensuring that the customer count is calculated using the same methodology as it has been since the inception of the contract. There is a motion on the table that leads to the inclusion of the contract on tonight's agenda.
Okay, questions? Scott?
Move to postpone indefinitely, contract number FY 2019-25B, Amendment Number Two, with Waste Connections of Alaska Incorporated Doing Business as Alaska Waste for Residential and Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Assembly discussion, any discussion or questions? Roll call vote on the amendment, I should say, on the motion to postpone.
Okay, Mr. Sharret?
Yes.
Mr. White, Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, zero no's.
Thank you. Next is ordinance number FY 2025-3, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending Title VIII Health and Safety Chapter 8.25 Solid Waste Collection and Disposal to clarify language and requirements for solid waste disposal. Once again, this is already on the floor, and, as a mention, so I would ask the manager for a staff report, please.
The Kodiak Island Borough Assembly established the solid waste contract committee with Resolution 2412 to evaluate, develop, and clarify inconsistencies with current solid waste contract. After nine meetings, the committee recommended changes to the general formatting, definitions, fees, and reporting periods. As a result of some of the recommendations, there would need to be accompanying code changes. The summary of changes were sent to the Borough Attorney, and the final project was then sent to the Assembly on August 30th to prep for discussion at the September 12th work session. The Assembly asked for more time to review the proposed changes, and a public hearing was added to the October 3rd regular meeting. Unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, because the contract changes never really got discussed, and then when they were discussed, we didn't want to go that direction, the ordinance was never really discussed. So, because we're not making the same changes in the contract that were proposed, at this time, staff believes there's not going to be need any code changes made in order to clarify the information in the contract that we need. So, this one, I don't think we will have to revisit. The code will stay the same, and you've already stated that there's a motion already on the table, so I think, once we postpone this tonight, you will not see this one come back.
Scott?
Move to postpone indefinitely, ordinance number FY 2025-03, an ordinance of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough, amending Title VIII Health and Safety Chapter 8.25 Solid Waste Collection and Disposal to clarify language and requirements for solid waste services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the motion to postpone.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharret?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next is new business, first being contract. This is contract number FY 2019-22B, Amendment Number Two to Contract Number 2019-22 for professional legal services with Keane &amp; Correll PPC. Scott?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute Amendment Number Two to Contract Number FY 2019-22B for professional legal services with Keane &amp; Correll PPC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This action will extend contract fiscal year 2019-22 for one year, giving time to complete ongoing legal cases as provided for in Section 5B of the contract. The contract with Keane &amp; Correll, represented primarily by attorney Scott Brent Erickson for the provision of professional legal services, was entered into on March 20th, 2019, with an initial term of three years. The contract was amended to extend the term for three years per the contract terms via Resolution Fiscal Year 22-13. The extended contract expires November 29th, 2024. However, there are ongoing cases for which Mr. Brent Erickson is best suited to manage for the Kodiak Island Borough. So we're asking that we extend the contract for one year. Last week at the work session, the Assembly also directed staff to start an RFP process for a new contract for professional legal services, so we'll be doing that as well.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as we discussed during our work session, I think you just referenced here, we're going to concurrently get a second RFP drafted, proposed, and pushed out before the expiry of this amendment. My overall questions, I think we addressed this in the work session, but there's nothing that precludes the existing contractor to bid on the new RFP, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharret?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next is resolutions. We have Resolution Number FY 2025-9, ratifying and certifying the results of the October 1st, 2024 Regular Municipal Election. Scott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY 2025-09.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. The Borough election held on October 1st, 2024 was a smooth and successful event. It reflected the dedication and efficiency of the election officials and the Clerk's Office team. Special recognition is extended to the precinct election officials, including the receiving team and the Canvas Board. The Canvas Board, consisting of four diligent members, demonstrated remarkable attention to detail. I can proudly say that the local election was conducted with the highest level of integrity, adhering to state laws and Borough regulations, and with no incidents of illegal activities reported. The Canvas Board are just the Assembly to certify the election results by passing Resolution Number FY 2025-09. Congratulations to the newly elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Sharret?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, zero no.
All right, thank you. Next is ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance number FY 2025-8, an ordinance of the Kodiak Island Borough accepting and appropriating grant funds for the 2020/2021 statewide salmon disaster. Scott?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2025-08 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The U.S. Secretary of Commerce declared a statewide salmon disaster for the 2020/2021 fishery disaster that affected all species of salmon in certain areas of Alaska. Consequently, disaster funds were allocated to address losses to the affected salmon management areas. The Kodiak Island Borough has been notified of eligibility to receive $25,255 to compensate for lost income due to the effects of the fishery disaster that year. This ordinance is in accordance with Kodiak Island Borough Code 3.25.040.C, which requires the grant funds, which are unlimited as to use or subject only to general limitations, be appropriated by ordinance, and include an appropriate budget amendment. At the October 10th work session, the Assembly concurred that they did not want these funds to just go into the general fund, but instead wanted them to go into the Fisheries Work Group to be used for fisheries-related projects or matching funds for grants. After consulting with the Finance Director, staff recommends putting the money into a fisheries development project inside of the Capital Projects Fund, so if the funds are not used by the end of the fiscal year, they will remain protected in that project. There is a change made to line 40 of the ordinance to update where the funds will go that just changed it from general fund to capital projects fund, and then Dora will set up a project that is for fisheries development so that we can let that money build if there's future disaster funds, we can put all of that money in there until we decide how we want to use that. If we were just to put it in the Fisheries Work Group, they would just end up in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year, so this keeps it a little more protected.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Jared, and then Bo?
Um, Bo, actually. The Fisheries Development Project line sounds good. Can you talk maybe just a little bit more about that? So, what are like some of the other items in the Capital Projects Fund? Is there anything similar to that that's already in there?
Well, not specifically for this, but all of our capital projects, so like Peterson Roof is a capital project, so once we set the money aside, it will go in there, and then we're, it's obligated in there, and then we won't use it for anything else. And if I'm wrong about that, I'll send you an email tomorrow when I, after I talk to the Finance Director.
And so where does the language sit that this is the express, is it just going to be, it's going to sit in this, in this ordinance?
Yes, it will just sit in this, so it'll sit in this ordinance, and then we have to do a budget amendment showing that when we do our quarterly budget amendments, we'll do an amendment that says that that fund increased by that $25,255, so it'll be in a budget amendment. That's, so the Borough Code requires, if we get a grant that we don't have a specified use for, that we do an ordinance and an amendment showing where that goes.
Okay, thank you.
Bo?
Thank you. Would it be possible to sweep those, that small amount of funds that you were able to set aside at our first Fisheries Work Group meeting into this as well? I'm just concerned that that's going to get swept up at the end of the year if we don't identify a project for it.
The Assembly can do a budget amendment if, however they want to. If that, if you want to take that line item and put it into that project, you're more than, you just tell us to do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Sharret?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, four yes, zero no.
Thank you. Next is administration of the oath of office to newly elected officials, and for this we have our dear clerk, Nova, to handle the swearing-in of Scott Smiley, newly elected. Dave Johnson is out of town and will take his oath later when he gets back next week. You got to go down there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask Assembly Member Smiley, yep, Smiley, to come down, please. Okay, Mr. Smiley, if you would, please come over here, and then, that's good, raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I state your name.
I, Scott Smiley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
The Constitution of the State of Alaska.
And the ordinances of the Kodiak Island Borough.
And the ordinances of the Kodiak Island Borough.
I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a member of the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly.
As a member of the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would you sign this, the oath of office? And that is your certificate right there on campus. Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is we have presentation to outgoing Assembly Member James Turner. As he had announced two weeks ago, he would not be able to make the work session last week or this, this meeting here due to working in the evening. So, I will be making the presentation to him. There's some, some goodies that the clerks have gotten for him, so the bag will go with the certificate on there, so. So, next item we have is citizens' comments. This is, local number is 907-486-3231, toll-free number is 855-492-9202. Ask you to sign in and state your name for the record, turn on the microphone before speaking, address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. If you're calling in, please turn off listening devices to prevent feedback. Anybody wishing to come forward under citizens' comments, please do.
Coral Chernoff, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the vote to postpone on the solid waste amendment, and as you can probably hear, I'm tired. I was over at AFN listening to lots of hunting and fishing rights and regulations and moving forward about possibly, you know, doing something about subsistence. But, I guess what stands out to me, and I appreciate everyone being here, for sure, and I, you know, do work myself on boards, and, but I think, I'd like to just suggest that this process is a slow process, but I think the Assembly and staff can do a lot to make it move along a little better and faster, and part of that is with the Assembly giving clear direction, the Assembly gives direction to the staff on what to do. I think in this Alaska Waste Management, I think staff and the contractor kind of ran away on a fast train with no brakes, and it's exhausting as a citizen, these things have, they affect the citizens, they affect all of us. And when the process isn't working as it's supposed to work, when structure and frameworks for this to work don't work the way they're supposed to work, it's pretty painful, it can be painful for citizens. And I've talked to a lot of citizens, and got quite a few of them to come in here, you know, and that's a tough process because they feel like they don't get listened to. Several of them, you know, we come in here and we get cut off, and that never feels Citizens call Assembly members and don't get calls back. All of this is in their hands, it's in their hands to make this a better process, a better process for all of us that are citizens. It's hard to live in Kodiak, we pay high property taxes, this pays to help run the Borough, and we should feel like we're getting something for our money, right? If nothing else, to be respected when we come to the mic, I think that's pretty major. And when you get calls as you sit up here to serve the citizens... major. And when you get calls, as you sit up here to serve the citizens, when you get calls, to answer those calls, and meet with people, and listen to their phone calls. But I do appreciate the work that you do. I know you put a lot of time in, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Coral. Anyone else wishing to come up for citizens' comments?
My name is Brenda Finley, again, and I just wanted to, I got nervous before. I wanted to take a little bit of time just to carry on further off of what Coral was saying, because this struggle that I've been through this summer was, I believe, unnecessary. I deserve a response when I'm reaching out to people that are supposed to work in my service district, even if the response is a no. But to be ignored for as long as I was ignored is completely unacceptable. There also should be a system in place where, if somebody's making a request, I got so tired of hearing that I had to be referred to one person and that one person had sole control over allocating workload and ordering workload and whatever, and that's not the type of government we run. So that being said, there has to be a better process in place because probably, well, I know my service area board knows that I've been reaching out for help because I have the unanswered email in that packet from June 24th. But that can't be my end-all-be-all. There has to be somewhere else that I can go if I'm still seeking help and I can't get any answers. I've even offered a lot of ideas. Like, that packet that I handed out is pretty excessive with the details in there, but I didn't want to leave anything out so that people would know and understand that this is important to me, that I've put the time and the work in to trying to help my family and other people on my street to get their work done, and to be met repeatedly with excuse after excuse, I don't find that acceptable. And I think there should be some kind of public awareness where when people get requests and to get work done, other people may say, hey, yeah, this is important, and we need to get this done as well. I'm not the only person in my district with this issue, but that just further reiterates the point that I'm trying to make, that how do people get work done? And one person can't control everything. And maintenance is just that. It means it gets done when it's needed. It doesn't get neglected for a decade, and then you're paying catch-up and backup, and people are facing health and safety risks. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Are there any calls?
No calls.
No calls. All righty. Next item we have is Assemblymember comments. Jared, I'll start with you. No, James was first on the.
James was there. Let's see. You know, the next, you know, two and a half weeks, maybe even probably longer than that, are going to be really, right, tense in the country and the state on our island. And I typically don't get, like, religious up here because I keep that close to myself, but I think, as cliche as this sounds, I think would be, this is a really good time to think about the parable of the good Samaritan. It's, like I said, it's cliched, it's overused. Not going to go over the story. You know the story. But the message that we typically hear after we hear that story is, right, it's a question. Will you be a neighbor? And I listened to someone, or read a book or something many years ago, and the writer said, you know, that's not the real question. The real question is not, will you be a neighbor? The real question is, to whom will you be a neighbor? The assumption that we are already neighbors. And I think it's good for us up here, and with what we've heard today, and with what's going to go on in the country over the next few weeks, just, maybe just keep that, keep that in mind, keep that question in mind. To whom are you going to be a neighbor to over the next few weeks?
Thank you. Bo?
Thank you. Well, well put, Mr. Griffin. I agree. Just wanted to, again, put this on the community's radar, that the Joint Fisheries Work Group is up and running again, and we're having another meeting this upcoming Wednesday, or next Wednesday, the 23rd, at noon, and that will be in the city conference room. So this, everyone's welcome if you're a sport fisher person. If you subsist on fish in Kodiak, if you are a commercial fisher person, please come. Let us know where you want us to support you and how we can support you. We're slowly building up resources to do that, but without your input, we don't know where to direct them. So please come if you can. If not, please call anyone on the Assembly or City Council who's assigned to these work groups, and we're happy to help.
Thank you. Scott?
Well, I want to thank everybody that voted for me. I am deeply appreciative of the chance to serve on the Assembly for another term. I think the most important thing to me is doing what's the best for the entire community, and sometimes it's not easy to psych out. And there's quite a bit of background information that's necessary to make cogent decisions on this board. And we have to thank staff a lot for helping us out with those bits of information that make a difference. I also want to thank all the people that come and speak at these meetings. It's challenging to try to empathize with everyone, but it's important to try, and to try to understand what the issues are, and potentially to try to find solutions to the problems they bring to us. Some of these are difficult problems that really the Assembly can't do much about. But on the other hand, some of them we can help on, and I want to continue to try to do that. I want to thank everybody else on the Assembly who's been so supportive of me over the years, and I want to divest myself of the deputy presiding officership as soon as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of deep comments tonight. I appreciate that. Dr. Griffin, I admire your comment, and I would, that gives me good pause for reflection. Citizen comments are extremely important because it's how we learn the other side of the story. And although it's a perspective, and it's someone's perception of an issue, it does give credence to, again, another version that we might not necessarily read in a report. I would also like to echo Dr. Smiley's comment. You know, as we look down our manager report that we get every week, there's mainly new information in here, and I just have to compliment you on that. You have a lot going on with a lot of tasks, Madam Manager, and it's really neat to see somebody as organized and as professional as you executing the duties of your office. And although you and I might not always see eye to eye, I appreciate you at least listening to my perspective as well, much like we need to do with the public. There are some community concerns that I do believe are within our rights. You know, when somebody comes up and brings questions about a contract, when somebody comes up and brings questions about committees, or comes up and asks about service districts, I think that those are actually under our purview to be able to inquire, ask the difficult questions, because we are the voice for those that might be softer spoken. And I will choose to be neighborly to those that have a softer voice. And so, again, I appreciate everybody on the Assembly, and we are going to be in an interesting time, not only locally with elections and, you know, through America, but we are in a very tense time in the entire United States and across the planet. And so, yep, let's figure out how to be neighborly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Want to let everyone know that absent in-person voting for the upcoming November 5th, 2024 general election will be available from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. starting on Monday, October 21st through Monday, November 4th, in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, October 31st, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, November 7th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. Next item we have is an executive session. This is discussion of potential pending litigation on Cana Marketplace property tax. Staff report, Amy Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would appreciate the opportunity to talk to the Assembly about issues as listed that could affect the finances of the Borough.
Scott?
Move to convene into executive session under the authority of Kodiak Island Borough Code 2.30.030 F1A, to discuss pending litigation, to which the Borough is a party, and to provide direction to the Borough Manager regarding that litigation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Sharrett. Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Four yes, zero no.
Scott?
Move to invite the Mayor, Assembly, Manager, and Clerk into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. What we're going to do is take a 10-minute recess before we go into executive session. Under, thank you.